We have a call to order, Board of Education meeting June 25th, 7 o'clock. Lisa, you take attendance?
Yep.
All board members are present.
Okay, instead of Pledge of Allegiance, we have something special tonight. Vicki, Dave, can you tee it up?
It's coming.
I'm sure it will. Thanks for teeing that up. If for those, for those who did not know, that is our BHHS choir group that sang that rendition at our driving graduation. So we thought for those who weren't privileged to be there or see that, you know, we wanted to play that tonight and that was great. With that, do we have any public comment, Dave?
Do, we do.
Okay, so one public comment from Michael Morgan. The public comment is some school districts have laid out a plan for students for fall of 2020. Can Bloomfield Hills School do the same or offer a date as to when a formal actionable plan will be implemented? So we'll get back to unless Superintendent Watson, do you want to comment just on that?
Yes, as part of the presentation this evening, we'll be talking about options for a safe return to school for the 2020-2021 school year.
Thanks, Pat. Before I go to my speech, can I get a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. May I add something to the agenda, please?
Sure.
Okay, I would like to add, I think it's number H or letter H on our board business, and it would be, "I propose that the Board of Education approve up to $1.2 million for return-to-school technology needs that is in the best interest of our students and families. These costs will be funded from the center program reserves and offset by any state or federal funding that may be provided in the future."
Thanks, Howard. Have a motion? Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion on it? I don't think so. Just going around. Jackie?
Mr. President, let's make sure this is just, we're voting just to amend the agenda.
Correct, we're not voting on it, we're voting to amend it. Talk about it. Jackie?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Cynthia? Dave, did we get her mic checked out?
Corey's working it on it with her, I'm sorry. Oh, here she is.
Can you hear me now? Yes.
Yes, yes, okay. Howard, obviously, yes, he made the motion, yes, passes, okay. With that, we'll move to the president's report or president's statement. So I have a brief statement before we go to Superintendent Watson. So, "As the end of the 2019-20 school year has officially closed, I would just like to say we made it. Although we are part of history none of us has chosen, we will emerge stronger because of the lessons we learned. I'm incredibly proud of the entire BHHS community for support we have given each other. Student voice rings louder than ever and is very important to this district. You just heard our BHHS choir beautifully opened our meeting with the same tribute to our national anthem they sang during the driving graduation. And shortly, you will hear a resolution co-created by a newly-formed Student Equity Task Force. Later, our board will also be appointing the 2020-2021 Student Board Interns and Student Advisory Council. As a board and district, we're proud of our students who continue to make a difference in our community, in our district and community. Members of the Student Equity Task Force who are on the call with us right now, working with Margaret Schultz and Pat Watson, will be presenting a resolution tonight and have made a commitment to use intentional words and actionable steps that our board in collaboration with our administration will be working on implementing new policies and practices. On behalf of the board, we wanted to thank these students who have spent their own personal time identifying and working on areas that we as a district can approve upon. Our district will now have a resolution that will become a guiding force in our ongoing quest to become a district that guarantees not only equal but an equitable education for all of our students. The work, as always, is ongoing and evolving. As discussed earlier, we look forward to working with our 2020-2021 Board Interns and Advisory Council, who will be working all year with our board administration and community in order to continue to provide student voice into district decisions. We will invite these students to our July 9th Board Study Session to officially introduce them to the community. Finally, whether you're taking advantage of our summer learning experience in Continuous Learning 3.0, the summer edition, or taking the time to do other things, please remember to vote on August 4th. There is an important bond on the ballot. On behalf of the Board of Education and staff at BHHS, we wish all of you a wonderful summer." With that, I hand it over to Pat.
Thank you, Mr. Colen. So just a few things in my update this evening. One, it's about our task force groups that have continued to need to work on our return-to-school plan. Tonight, we will share an update with the board and the community. On June 30th, the governor is scheduled to release back-to-school guidance. After we receive her guidance, we'll be able to formulate our final plan and share that out as well. Our next Facebook Live regarding the bond is scheduled for June 30th at noon. I'd like to personally thank all the community members who have emailed me or reached out to me to ask clarifying questions about the bond. I know sometimes it can be confusing or there's a lot of misinformation that may come out. Please continue to either call or email me so I can clarify that. I'd also like to thank LST, our teacher leaders, and the Bloomfield Hills Education Foundation for their work and support. I'm making sure all of our K-7 students receive math, ELA, and writing journals for the summer, all at no cost to our parents. Also excited about our preparing for algebra summer class. This is the first time that Bloomfield Hills Schools is offering this class. So far, we have 31 registered, and the goal of the class is to provide the algebra information students might need during the summer, to kind of bridge the gap before they take algebra either as the seventh grader or eighth grader or even as a ninth grader. Lastly, I'd like to wish Mr. Grant Dalton the best of luck as he leaves as the MEA Uniserve Director for Bloomfield Hills Schools. Prior to being the Michigan Education Association Uniserve Director, Grant was also the Bloomfield Hills School District Union President and a former BHHS teacher. He is now going to serve a different group of districts. In my six months here, he's just been amazing to work with, talk to, and really knew the district history ins and outs, and was just a great advocate for all things for students. So I wish him the best of luck, and if there's ever the opportunity for him to return, that would be something I would be of full support of. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. So Dave, if you can just briefly put up before I hand it over to Margaret and our students to go through the resolution, could you just put up the names of our students who've worked on the resolution so our community can see that and acknowledge these students and all their hard work? Thanks, Dave. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Margaret Schultz, who's been working with our students on this resolution. So Margaret, I'll hand it over to you.
Hi, everyone. I am going to be super quick. I just wanted to say how proud I am of the work that the students have done. It has really been a pleasure to work with such a passionate group of students from different grade levels, and I'm going to let them introduce themselves and share with you. So it's all you.
I'm Heather Chen from Class of 2022, Rising Junior from Bloomfield Hills High School.
Hi, I'm Jonaki Radhakrishnan. I'm a Rising Junior at Bloomfield Hills High School.
I'm Savitri Anandaraman. I'm a Rising Senior at Bloomfield Hills High School.
I'm Gabrielle Duchy, and I'm a Rising Senior at the International Academy.
I'm Toby Gittleman, and I'm a Rising Senior at Bloomfield Hills High School.
I'm Adriana Calaba. I'm a Rising Senior at International Academy.
Hi, I'm Akita Codian, and I'm a Rising Junior at Bloomfield Hills High School.
Hi, I'm Lake Leatherwood, and I'm a Rising Senior at the International Academy.
Good evening. My name is Zinkapich, and I'm also a Rising Senior at the International Academy.
Hi, I'm Isla Rafique, and I'm a Rising Senior at Bloomfield Hills High School.
Hi, I'm Ria Doshi, and I'm a recent graduate of Bloomfield Hills High School.
Okay, if you guys want to, you know, just start off, you know, and read the resolution, and then after you read the resolution, some of our board members will have comments and then we'll vote on the resolution.
Yeah, so we do have a small introduction prepared. First off, we'd like to thank Mrs. Schultz and Mr. Watson for giving us a voice and working with us to put together this resolution. We truly appreciate all of your guys' support. Next, I'd like to speak to the significance of this resolution and why it is so necessary. Our country is experiencing a fundamental shift right now. The public outrage over the murders of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor have opened the door to finally address centuries of racial injustice. Now is the time for aggressive systemic change that works to dismantle the legacy of racism and oppression in this country. In order to achieve that kind of justice, we have to start in schools. Racism is not a random, naturally occurring phenomenon. It's taught, it's deliberate, and it is alive and well even within the halls of our Bloomfield schools. As a Black student, I face it every day, sometimes in the form of microaggressions, innocently ignorant comments, outdated curriculum, and sometimes as blatant discrimination and hate. The same is undoubtedly true for other minority students. This kind of everyday racism is exhausting, and it's been scientifically proven to affect minority students' ability to perform. But this resolution is not just for minorities, it serves the privileged majority as well. As a school and as a community, it is our duty to be educating our students not just to score well on tests or get into good colleges, but to be contributing meaningful citizens of the world. How are we doing that if we're not teaching them to recognize and overcome their own biases? How are we doing that if we're not being honest with them about the structural racism that has built and exists today in our country? We are doing all of our students a disservice by failing to educate them on the world as it is, with all of its ugliness and failings. We may think we are shielding them, but all we are doing is allowing them to exist within their own ignorance, and that ignorance is dangerous. As a society, we have come to a point where it is neither possible nor sufficient to simply unteach racism. Racism is not a concept, it's an institution, and that's why we must take an actively anti-racist stance and work to bring justice to communities of color by dismantling the racist structures within our schools and within ourselves. This resolution sets the foundation to do just that, and it is long overdue. So with that said, I'd like to introduce our resolution.
Introducing the Bloomfield Hills Schools Board of Education Resolution to Eradicate Racism and to Create More Equitable and Inclusive Schools for All Children. Whereas the Bloomfield Hills Schools Board of Education stands firmly against all acts of individual and systemic racism. Whereas we wish to end violence and injustices and unequivocally declare that Black Lives Matter and that an injustice to one is an injustice to all. Whereas we believe that children begin their lives without hatred and bigotry, and that we must uphold the public's trust by fostering understanding, acceptance, respectful civic discourse, and inclusion among our students when they enter the schoolhouse doors. Whereas we believe in the ability of our schools to uplift a community of diverse ideas that recognize and celebrate all the attributes that form children and hold true to the ideal that we are all created equal. Whereas we believe that schools must play a vital role in dismantling systems that have marginalized students, faculty, and families of color.
Whereas we believe that educators should be lifelong learners about race and racism and should be provided the necessary resources to facilitate discussions of race and racism to help themselves and students understand our collective humanity and to challenge themselves and students to ground perceptions and facts. Whereas we believe that as educators grow, they must continue to reflect on and amend curricula, training, policies, and systemic practices in schools to help racism. Whereas Bloomfield Hills presents itself as a diverse and internationally-minded community, they should be held to that standard. Whereas we commend students when they demonstrate initiative in expressing their commitment to building and supporting anti-racist culture, and we encourage students to help us in continuing to work toward racially competent learning environment. Whereas we will support our regional and statewide organizations as they review current standards, policies, legislation, and policy guidance to ensure that they promote equity and aggressively disrupt practices that perpetuate racial inequalities.
Now, therefore, it'd be resolved that the Bloomfield Hills Schools Board of Education does hereby commit to stand against any and all acts of racism, disrespect, violence, and inequitable treatment of any person, and will work toward to eradicate racism and to create a more equitable and inclusive school for all children. Section 1, the Board directs its policy committee to revise the current equity policy to strengthen our district's equity policy in order to eliminate the effects of racism on our marginalized students and staff. Section 2, the Board directs its Board Instructional Committee to develop and/or revise policies and protocols integrating additional content that decolonizes the curriculum, that is racially and culturally literate into the curriculum and within the school buildings. Section 3, the Board directs the district to recognize and honor Indigenous peoples' contributions and the impact that history has had on their heritage within our curriculum.
Section 4, the Board will seek to reduce incidence of hate and bias by requiring anti-racism training for staff while also committing to address and appropriately handle incidents that are reported. The Board also asks the superintendent to work with the staff on creating learning spaces that encourage open discussions around race and racism. Section 5, the Board requires that all reports of racist and discriminatory language, attitudes, behaviors, and actions in our schools are responded to with respect to the reporter expeditiously and with due diligence and investigation, and commit to educating students on the impact of their actions and seeing to their full understanding of the harm they have committed. Section 6, we recognize that students of all ages are able to talk about race and the impacts of racism, and commit to implement anti-racist programs starting at elementary school. Section 7, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of the Board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of the Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great job, students. You know, I know some of my colleagues will have, you know, I had an opening statement, you guys all know how I feel about all of you. Before the Board comments, can I get a motion and then support of the motion, and then we'll have some comments, discussions, and then we can vote on it?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution to eradicate racism and create equitable, inclusive schools as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have discussion?
Paul, is this when we say a couple of things or just discussing, discussing the resolution itself?
This is when I'd suggest would say a couple of things, you know, that we, you know, some of us had planned to say, and then we could vote on the resolution. I know Cynthia has comments, I know Howard has comments. So I'll start off, I'll go around. Cynthia, I know you prepared something. Do you want to go through your comments, Cynthia?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank our students who reached out to Margaret Schultz and Pat Watson because they want to use their voices to make change here in our own community and to push us to confront the issues of racism within our schools. I love their passion and their sense of urgency to make change now. Our district has identified strategies which specifically address issues of equity, diversity, and inclusion, but tonight's resolution charges us to address racism head-on. I'm forward to working with our students, staff, and community as we seek to uproot systemic racism that exists in our schools.
And thanks, Cynthia. And I just, I just saw in the chat room, and I totally forgot, I forgot she was going to join and join. So before I go to you, Jennifer, we have Senator Rosemary Bear, who's on the line, who would like to say a few words to our students and our community.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President, and I appreciate very much being allowed to speak because I know I'm not a voting member of the school board, but I am certainly a really big fan. Thank you all for the work on this resolution. You have clearly put a lot of heart and soul and intelligence into this, and I feel that you are so brave and so strong to stand up and not be silent, not stand by. You talk about being contributors and teaching people to contribute, and you are doing that in such a significant way at such an important time on such a critical topic. Truly, what we call the thought leaders, right, in our community, you are the thought leaders on this topic, and we're going to look to you, we're going to work with you. I look forward to working with you, I want to support you in this resolution and the actions. One of my favorite parts is the specific actions in here. I think that this is an example to the rest of the state, every other school district to look at this and how you can work together. We can help, if we can help, and move things forward to actually eradicate racism and Bloomfield Hills and beyond that. So thank you very much, I'm so impressed, and I'm so happy that I could listen and hear your presentation, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thanks, Senator, thanks for taking the time. I know you have to jump off, but we appreciate it, thank you very much. We'll be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Senator Bear, for coming to our meeting. I just wanted to say real quickly that our, thank you to our brilliant students who came here tonight to read out the resolution, and I know how hard you worked on the resolution with Margaret Schultz, our Director for Social, Emotional Learning, and Educational Equity. I just wanted to say to the larger community who may be watching or will watch this meeting that our students spoke the resolution tonight, but I want there to be no mistake about the fact that this resolution has the full force and weight of this school board behind it to make Bloomfield Hills School District absolutely an anti-racist community. We have action steps with big teeth in them for all of our committees and all of our work from the board level on down because hatred, ignorance, whether it's willful or innocent. I grew up in a very innocently ignorant community. I have learned so much living here, I'm forever changed and forever grateful, and I'm very much looking forward to putting hard work into all of this because racism hurts every single person involved in its transaction. This is individual work, this is group work, everybody has to do a lot of soul searching and has to be brave and work and talk and love, and we will turn the corner and make our community strong and anti-racist. Thank you.
Howard?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a statement. I'd first like to, again, thank the students for all the work that you did, and it really drove the point home very, very well. Last month, the killing of George Floyd renewed a longstanding civil rights discussion within the United States and around the world. Tragically, when this country was founded, structural racism was incorporated into our Constitution. In the 1860s, we fought a civil war over it. In the 1950s, we had landmark Supreme Court case that struck down years of racist legislation and educational discrimination. In the 1960s, we enacted civil rights laws which codified the Supreme Court's ruling into law. Yet, and yet, here we are today, continuing to address the vestiges of what started over 400 years ago. This issue is coming to our attention tonight because our country is trying to, trying to come to grips with how inequitable our current social, our current criminal justice system truly is. But sporadic overt racism and more insidious implicit bias and white privilege is not isolated exclusively to policing. Racial disparities exist throughout our society, from educational attainment to employment to income inequality, to housing, and to life expectancy and health care. But while we in education cannot address all of these social ills, we do have a pivotal role to play. Education is the great equalizer, giving every person the same opportunity to succeed in life. But if we as educational leaders do not do our job to the fullest extent of our abilities, then the unfortunate unbroken cycle of generational inequality that we currently see will continue into the future. This is where we, the Bloomfield Hills School Board, come in. What we do impacts the daily lives of 5,500 children that the Bloomfield Hills community has entrusted into our care. We recently approved a new strategic plan which commits us to, quote, "to lead the nation in educating and empowering every learner every day so they will reach their unique potential." But we know that we do not, we are not where we need to be. There is much work to be done to significantly reduce and hopefully eliminate racial disparities within our district. We need to hold ourselves accountable to reach the lofty vision that our community has set before us. The directives that this resolution obligates us to implement are consistent with the path upon which the strategic plan has put us. This resolution, resolution is but a single, though important, step on the long road towards that vision. But what we do tonight at this board table needs to be translated into classroom action and improve student outcomes. While it will take time for us to see the results of what we do today, we must remember what Dr. Martin Luther King famously said, "The arch of the moral, the arch of the moral universe is long, but it bends towards justice."
Thanks, Howard. Jackie?
Yeah, thank you, Paul. I sat here listening and saw everyone's faces as they worked together to read this resolution, and I'm so proud and so impressed by the magnificent, powerful words that were spoken tonight. And I want to also say that, thank you to everyone who was a part of this and may this happen. I think that, as Jennifer mentioned, that the Bloomfield Hills School Board has been fully committed to student voice as well as anti-racism. And however, this powerful resolution puts in place very precise wording as an action plan for us to move forward. I really think it's a beacon of light also for our greater community, and I hope that our, the rest of Bloomfield Hills and Bloomfield Township and the greater community pass similar resolutions if they have not already done so, and build upon the work that we do here and the thoughts that we put together in this resolution tonight at Bloomfield Hills Schools. And I also want to say that, reflecting on our students, that the future is in very good hands, and I'm very proud of all the work that they're doing, and I look forward to approving this resolution.
Thanks, Jackie. Any other board members want to say anything before we vote? Thanks Jackie. Any other board members want to say anything before we vote? Okay, with that, we have a motion. We have a second. And I will go around Cynthia?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes 7-0. Again, on behalf of the board and community, I want to thank the students, Margaret, Pat, everyone who put this together. You know, what you presented tonight, again, you guys did a tremendous job. You guys know how I feel about you and and thank you very much. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting or you're welcome to jump off and you know, get back to your families and everything else you need to do. But again, thank you very much.
Point of order, Mr. President?
Yes?
Now that we have approved this wonderful resolution, there are seven different sections here, some of which have been assigned to certain committees, but others of which have not been allocated. In order to make sure that this resolution gets implemented as expeditiously as possible, is it possible that we can just take a few minutes and as a board go through the seven sections and just designate which committee is going to be responsible for following up on these actions with the administration?
Yeah, that's fine. We can go. I have the resolution in front of me. We can go to section.
Some of it was already directed to the committees, right?
Yep, so I can I can go through it. So this is important work. Section one is the Policy Committee. Section two is the Board Instructional Committee. Section three, the I could assign that to the Instructional Committee. Section four, we can have that with the Policy Committee. Section five, Policy Committee. Section six.
Elementary school, I'd say that would be BIC?
BIC. Section seven, students' ages.
That's the Agenda Committee.
Yeah, that's the Agenda Committee. Is there anything I missed? And if someone's taking notes, someone can put that down and then we could start working on that on our committees. Thanks Howard for bringing that up. Thanks again, students. Again, welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. With that, we will go Lisa to Consent Agenda.
Okay, sorry, I'm a little choked up because of our amazing students and I'm not often speechless, but anyway. I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the Consent Agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes from the regular meeting of May 28. Request to approve minutes from the closed session of June 4. Request to approve minutes from the closed session of June 11. Request to approve minutes from the study session of June 11. Request to approve minutes from the closed session of June 23. Request to approve HR actions. Request to approve dispersment reports. Request to approve monthly financial reports. Request to approve food service management contract renewal as attached. Request to approve EnviroClean contract extension as attached. Request to approve Metro Bureau membership for 2020-21. And request to approve Michigan High School Athletic Association membership for 2020-21.
Thanks. We have the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Howard?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Okay, I also support it. Consent passes 7-0. Public hearing, public hearing on adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget. Tina?
Good evening, everyone. I am going to present my screen with the presentation. Okay, I've enlarged it. So far, everyone hopefully is seeing this just fine.
Yep.
All right, so annually, we are required to go through a public hearing to discuss next year's budget as well as the tax rate. And I also include the final budget, which we did cover at the study session on June 11. And on June 11, much, many of the slides are the same. So I will go quickly through wrapping up this year first. So looking at this year's general fund projections, we show the original budget for this year, the mid-year, and then the final budget. The final budget lands at a loss of about $3.1 million. Included in this is about $3.9 million. The impact is a $700 per pupil reduction based on what we currently know, given the state's shortfall in the budget. And we don't yet know how they will be solving that. And so the $700 per pupil reduction is currently what would be anticipated by most districts, right in the neighborhood of that amount. Many of our colleagues are doing the same. Then going through the next two slides, we actually have a reconciliation that takes us from the mid-year budget that had a surplus of about $600,000 all the way through that loss of $3.1 million that I showed you. The key changes are highlighted here. With the shutdown, we did have a loss in local revenues such as our rentals, the fields and building rentals. Preschool was a large one because we shut down, so that revenue decreased the the surplus into a loss. Then we have the $700 that I had mentioned already. Moving down further, on the second page, we actually did have savings in many different areas as highlighted here. This is the same that we showed on June 11 in our public study session. Because of the shutdown, we did have savings in utilities and fuel and gas. Of course, the buses weren't running as well as some of our purchased and contracted services, including custodial. So that brings us to this year's final budget, which is something later on the agenda under Board Business for board approval. Highlighting how our revenue sources come in, we are actually primarily funded by late local and state sources and most of that is our foundation allowance per pupil. So if I go to the next slide, I break down the revenue chart into foundation allowance, which is about 77% of our total revenue. And there's a state and a local portion. That's not too far from split equally. And then we have smaller portions from federal and local, et cetera. On the spending side of our budget, most of that, of course, is spent on staff. We are a service industry, if you will, serving our students and their learning. And our largest cost of staff is about $79 million or 84%. And I see that this is blinking on there too, and I'm not sure why it's blinking on my screen too. The special revenue funds are also required to be budgeted. Special revenue funds include our center program, International Academy, our Recreation Community Services, Food Services, and Co-Curricular Endowment Fund. In total, those funds are pretty close to break even with a slight loss of about $273,000. All of the detail package by fund is included in the board package, which is on the website. And we will also post board approval, be adding it to our transparency page. Now moving on to next year. Next year, we establish property tax millage rates for various areas. So if I go to the next chart, it shows us that we have about four different categories. The non-homestead category is 18 mils, which may be more of the non-primary residents or business properties in our district boundaries. We have our homestead properties or our primary residences, and that's about 6.9 mils. This is commonly referred to also as our hold harmless millage rate that taxpayers generously approve when we do go to the polls, and that's good through 2025. And then the bottom one, all classifications of property include debt service, which is paying for our high school bonded debt, principal and interest, and also the sinking fund. For the original budget next year, we are starting with a fund balance of $17.2 million. That was on the previous slide. And then we are keeping the revenue levels lower because we did reduce 700 per pupil this year. It's entering next year at a reduced level as well with a little bit of recovery. The expenditures are about $93.3 million. Budget balancing actions are included in here, especially with the reduced revenue. And we're projecting a loss of about almost $2.1 million. This does result in a fund balance projection for the end of next year, about $15.2 million or 16.3% of expenditures. What I expect just from all of the ongoing discussions is that there will be changes. We're we're hoping a little bit for the better based on some state and federal actions that may occur over the next couple of months. So we may have additional amendments that I come to the board with before our typical January timeframe. The reconciliation I don't always do, but I thought it would be helpful, especially given the budget scenario we're in, going from last year to this year. So starting with the $3.1 million that would have been last year's loss, we have some recovery of local revenue with rentals and preschool of about $850,000. There's a partial recovery we're including with per pupil revenue, and that's based on the latest that we're hearing from the states and the feds, just in terms of money that may be coming to offset some of the the spending and the loss we have, especially the state budget shortfall. Then there are a few other items detailed here, our Public Act 18 revenue. We do have some of the even last minute communications from the county that we've included in next year's budget. For staff compensation, the net change is actually very minimal, but a lot of that includes benefit increases offset by or yes, benefit increases offset by savings for salaries and wages. And some of that comes in the the budget balancing actions that we have beginning in July. Moving to the next slide, on the next slide, we do recognize that we had some help so far from the federal government through the CARES Act that flowed through the state and then also FEMA reimbursement. So on an ongoing basis, we are tracking our costs in order to maximize any reimbursement opportunities possible. And that is the net effect for next year. And then some of the costs that we did save during the shutdown are now added back into the budget. Again, no one has a crystal ball about return to school and we'll hear more about that later. But we are starting out the budget as if we, the buildings are open, they're heated, cooled, lighting's on, just to start the budget before any amendments come later. So that results in that $2 million loss that I mentioned earlier. Moving down to the special revenue funds, those are actually very close to break even again, but this time with a little bit of a surplus of $260,000. And then there's a special note where there was a postponement postponement of new accounting rules. And so that postponement now results in adding a new fund next year, the Hills Activities Fund. And that that represents money that the district holds on behalf of many groups. The class of 2020, the class of 2021, as well as Spanish Club, just many groups that we have and building funds. New rules are being applied and that creates a new fund in this category. So now looking at the forecast scenario, in the forecast, we actually look beyond this year. And this is the first time we actually, we did use, I did use a multi-year forecast. I am going to try to minimize this and see if it stops. Instead of maximizing it, hopefully you can see this. Maybe I got it to stop.
That's good.
Oh, no, there it goes again. So for next year, the most likely case is actually what is our budget for next year that I just went over, the $2.1 million loss. And then after that, the forecast that is on the next slide in a moment that I'm presenting to the board for you to consider in line with the board policy is what I ask that you focus on. But there is a worst and a best case. Worst case, if there's, if there isn't any recovery, if there are more per pupil cuts, if we have additional expenditures that are not even expected, if we have multiple spikes during next year. We've built in a worst case scenario, including significant enrollment changes. And then there's a best case. The best case includes a lot of, a lot more recovery, perhaps almost a full recovery between the two years of at least that $700 per pupil. And it just shows how changes in significant pieces of revenue or expenditures can drive this bottom line of fund balances a percent. So now, I actually typically do include and show the the board policy that drives our decisions and drives our budgeting as a as a guide, which includes a five-year forecast where our goal is 20% and the warning, that's usually the yellow light, if you will. And then 15% is is something that we are more concerned about. So if I just scroll up a little bit more here and we look at some of the worst case and then we look at the best case scenarios and then in between is what I'm about to show you. That is what is driving our decisions and drives the speed at which budget balancing actions are implemented. So on this slide right here, this is typically what is presented, not all of the different scenarios, where based on everything we know now and everything we've heard, and there is a lot, in fact legislative bills as recent as yesterday being shared with what might be proposed with an $800 per pupil amount of funding towards a lot of the costs that we've experienced, especially related to COVID. So based on everything we know, this particular forecast shows last year's audited year, which we were very close to break even. And then the proration that is included in this year, which that is not reflected in this revenue number, you have to take those two together. But the $3.1 million loss is what I showed you, 18.5 fund balance. Then next year, about $2.1 million of a loss, that brings us to 16.3. And then the farther we go out, the more difficult it is to predict. And I would say this is the most difficult budgeting time that I've ever lived through, even just for this year and next year, because we don't know yet what state and federal actions may or may not be taken over the next couple of months. So this is our best guess in the forecast that I asked the board to look at in line with the policy of adopting next year's budget. And then the next few slides, we're almost done and I'll entertain any questions you may have. Just shows the trend we've had since 2007, eight, before the recession for revenue and expenditures, where revenue and expenditures both trended down, of course, and then revenue really trended down and we had a series of losses. And then we've been recovering up until the the shutdown and the COVID pandemic. And then this gap right here is primarily due to that $700 reduction that we're taking into account this year. And then this last slide is a favorite of many and actually I think it was probably a year ago that we started using it. And and I have to give credit to Howard Behrens for really working with me and gathering some information and getting a better index to compare the foundation allowance per pupil funding to inflation or to an index that makes more sense, which is a price deflator for state and local government purchases. So when we look at this and look at the series of years, Proposal A was passed back in 94, 95. And the intent was to narrow the funding gap between the lowest funded districts and the highest funded districts. That has been occurring over all these years. The funding gap has narrowed. The maximum foundation is the category we are in. And then on top of this 2019, 20 column where it says 8529, we also receive a hold harmless amount per pupil that was established back in 94, 95. It's the same amount every year. That has not changed, 3,000, about almost $4,000 is usually what everyone will hear me say. You can do the math here. So Bloomfield Hills School since then, on a year-to-year cumulative basis, has increased the per pupil funding by about 18%. And when we compare that to And when we compare that to this index going all the way back to when Proposal A began, that's a hundred and five percent. And then, of course, the minimum foundation districts you would expect to grow at a faster rate than than Bloomfield, and that's ninety three percent. And so this this basically forces us to look at budget balancing actions on an ongoing basis. That's been the case even before the recession. We came out of the recession, very difficult decisions have been made. Very proactive and prudent decisions were made even before I joined Bloomfield Hills Schools by the board and administration to set us up as well as we possibly could be, even to endure what comes with the COVID pandemic pandemic and the uncertainty in funding. So I think all prior board members and administrations for that. And of course, our current board and administration moving us forward with tough decisions, but yet always keeping the student success at the forefront of our decisions. So besides this, that this is my last slide. And I'll entertain any questions, and I can go back to any slide you would like.
Thanks, Tina. I know as a board, we've spent significant amount of time going through this, especially with the situation going on in Lansing in terms of, you know, not just our budget, but across the state of Michigan. And we do have later on under nine A and B, two motions we're going to be making in regards to the budget. So if we want to entertain questions now, then maybe we won't have much discussion later on. Howard, you had a question?
Tina, looking at this last chart that you've got displayed there, on the column two thousand nineteen twenty for the Bloomfield Hills Foundation Allowance, you have twelve thousand three hundred and sixty four dollars. Does that reflect the seven hundred dollar reduction?
It does not. And the reason it doesn't is we don't know, one, we don't know if that seven hundred dollars will be the end result. But if the state does that, we don't know in what form. So oftentimes, when we look at history of reductions per pupil, it doesn't necessarily immediately reduce the foundation allowance. So I'm being technically correct here. Any publication you look at, that's our foundation, and a per pupil reduction might take another form. Good question, Howard.
But I I hear you. But when we do our final comprehensive annual financial report, if we do get a reduction, whether they technically call it a foundation allowance reduction or a proration or whatever, I think it would be prudent or or it would make sense to adjust it here because that eighteen percent cumulative inflation or cumulative improvement over the years, it's going to be significantly lower than eighteen percent if you take the seven hundred consideration.
Excellent point. I will definitely do that. And when we hear, I think I think we should hear before that audit report is finalized. What do you think?
Absolutely. And, you know, if if I understand the technicality of if it is the foundation allowance, but we definitely could put an asterisk or something if when it if and when it does. If it they don't technically call it a foundation allowance, we can call it a foundation allowance adjustment. Going. Thank you.
I will add an asterisk to this before publishing publishing it on our webpage.
Perfect. Thank you.
Tina, yeah, I have a question. This is a follow up to that. So we're we're looking later on in Board Business. You know, in terms of passing a budget nineteen twenty 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 one with, I I guess, built in this amount that we've all been hearing. And I know you've been on, you know, a tremendous amount of calls, the seven hundred dollars. I'm assuming we're allowed to pass a budget, even though nothing's become official, using a number that, you know, you have you been given guidance to use that number? Have other districts used that number to pass a budget? That seven hundred dollar decrease per per student?
Yeah, so I actually work with MSBO. The seven hundred dollars has been a number we have floated around at with the Michigan School Business Officials as well as Senate Fiscal Agency. And some districts chose maybe six hundred dollars. I don't know of any specifically that went lower than that. But I did hear there are some in the state that didn't include anything, and they're thinking the whole hit will be next year. But to your point, Paul, we are allowed to include the best guess. And yes, we're allowed to pass a budget with the best that we know at the time. And I know between Pat, myself, and as well as others in our district, this is right within what we are hearing, at least as of today.
Okay, all right. Does any other my call Howard, I know you have another question. Does anyone else have any other questions, or I'll go back. Howard, do you have another question?
Yeah, I just want to make a a comment. I was listening to a radio show on WDET yesterday. And the Stephen Henderson had people on talking or experts talking about the the funding crisis in education and in the state. And they were talking about equity. And they were saying that a foundation allowance reduction of across the board of six, seven hundred dollars would not be equitable. And that there should be equity applied to the reductions that occur either this year or next year. Have you heard anything on your side through MSBO related to that?
I actually have not, except for radio show comments like that. I've maybe heard it twice, but not nothing specific. Proration has been talked about in a straight line. And so that's probably where the equitable comes in, having a higher funded district cut seven hundred as well as a lower funded, so I could see where the comment comes from. But no suggestion that that is really getting a lot of ground or, you know, that people are moving in that direction. But, you know, again, no crystal ball, right, Howard?
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tina. With that, we'll go to general discussion. Jennifer, report of BIC.
Hi. So apologies in advance. This report is going to be a little bit longer than normal because I was not able to give a report at our last board meeting. So what I would have reported to you on May twenty eighth was information that we discussed at our meeting on May eleventh. And at that time, as you know, from cabinet packet updates, we reviewed a lot of aggregate data for M step, SAT and PSAT for two thousand nineteen. I am going to go over it and and give you some numbers in in a little bit of detail here because it directly relates to our anti-racism resolution and the work that we are going to we are doing and going to be doing. And before I I spit out some numbers, you know, some of which are quite concerning, I do want to say that this is one metric, this this bucket of three standardized tests. As we all know, there are many variables. It's not a perfect metric to evaluate performance. And I also want to say that some of the some of the dichotomies that you're going to hear are beginning to be addressed by Margaret Schultz and her team specifically targeted at the experience in mathematics for our African American students. So so aggregate, and I'm going to make some generalizations, which I will try to preface. So if you look at the aggregate data of all three of these tests, more specifically M step, we just have more numbers. We are our students are scoring with approximately two thirds at state's standard proficiency levels. Depending on the grade level in the test, the numbers are generally sixty five to seventy percent. We are we are so we are meeting state proficiency standards because the state has set that at sixty percent proficiency for English language arts and about forty eight percent for mathematics. I guess one could argue whether, you know, where do those numbers come from? I'm not sure, but we we are ahead of those state targets. We also are scoring very highly in state and county rankings. So I'm going to give you some ranking statistics, and these are all countywide now, so not statewide. So for English Language Arts, M step for grades three through seven, M step was grades three through eight, but last year was the first year where grade eight was moved into PSAT instead of M step. So this is grades three through seven. Across Oakland County, if we look at all of our students, we are ranked sixth in the county for English Language Arts, and we are ranked fourth in the county for mathematics. Both of those are the same ranking as we had in two thousand eighteen, so from year to year. The data is and all of this, by the way, was in the PowerPoint that Learning Services has shared with us in our board updates. The this data set is broken down into four different groups, subgroups of students, which are African American, economically disadvantaged, those with IEPs, and those whom are English language learners. So again, grades three through seven, M step. Our African American group is first in the county for ELA, second in the county for math. Our economically disadvantaged group is third in the county for ELA, first in the county for math. Those with IEPs scored fourth in the county for ELA, first in the county for math. And English language learners, we are ninth in the county for ELA, sixth in the county for math. Okay, so that that's M step grades three through seven. PSAT, grade eight. The test is called eight nine, but this is just applied to grade eight in our district. We scored first in the county for English Language Arts and fifth in the county for math. Again, reiterating that this is the first year that grade eight has been evaluated by PSAT. So we have no historical data for this as to how we've done in the past. Okay, so moving on to SAT. I think it's pretty widely known that we ranked forty fourth in the state this year for SAT scores. That puts us in the top six percent. For English Language Arts, we are tied for fourth in the county. And for mathematics, we are tied for sixth in the county. PSAT and SAT lumped together, so now this is grades eight and and eleven slash twelve. If we break it down into those four groups, for English Language Arts, we are all for all of our students, we're third. And for all of our students in mathematics, we're sixth. For African Americans, PSAT and SAT, we are third in the county for ELA, ninth in the county for mathematics. Economically disadvantaged, we're fourth in the county for ELA, fifth in the county for math. Those with IEPs, second in the county for both ELA and math. And English language learners, we are twelfth in the county for English for English Language Arts and eighth in the county for mathematics. So what what these data basically show is that we have wide point spreads, twenty to forty point score different in the proficiency levels of some of the of our subgroups versus all of our aggregate students. And that if you're if you're talking about an overall proficiency of seventy and you've got a forty point spread, right, you're talking about a difference of of more than a hundred percent in in performance of, say, our African American students versus all the students. So this is very significant data, and administration has been and is taking a very hard look at this to see how we can minimize the spreads in the scores through the total academic experience. So, sorry, got to scroll down here. Yeah, so mathematics, I mean, the most our most glaring dichotomy or gap, if you want to call it that, is mathematics between our aggregate students and our African American students, which is anywhere from twenty seven points to forty eight points, depending on the grade level that we are looking at. Okay, so that is from that's that's the standardized testing statistics that we went over in BIC on May eleventh. Since then, we've talked about a lot of other things, mostly which are COVID related. We all learned this was shared out in a weekly update, and Pat mentioned this in his report tonight that we the summer plans are thus, the the district has crafted K eight writing booklets and K seven Summer Bridge Reading and Math Booklets, which are free to all students. There is also optional virtual live instruction for small cost. For K two, it's a five-week program with two thirty-minute sessions per week. For K three, I think I have that wrong, maybe for three five, it's there are five weeks of classes with two forty-five minute sessions per week. Pat also mentioned the Preparing for Algebra course, which is five weeks with three forty-five minute sessions per week. And then there are also self and educated guided learning modules no charge for students with IEPs, ten classes of live instruction. So BIC also met again on both on June first and and on June eighth. And so a lot of that stuff, we did go over at our study session on June eleventh. But for the greater community, we just want to thank Superintendent Watson and the whole board for the board for approving the new grade six to eight social studies resource. And thank you to to Superintendent Watson for negotiating a reduced price. And many thanks, of course, to our social studies teacher leader, Kristin. I'm sorry, Kristin, I'm going to say I'm not going to pronounce this right. The Vigier, Vigier, and your whole social studies team for for all the research you did to find the right resource for our students, which was vetted very closely through an equity and inclusion lens by both teachers and students. So that was very helpful. We discussed at our study session and also in BIC the fact that the German language course will be moving online because of the resignation of our of our teacher and that current German students will be supported by a combination of online options and dual enrollment. And those students in the diploma program for IB will also be supported through their graduation. I'm going to the last thing I want to mention, which I'm just not going to say much because it's coming up in a few minutes by from Pat and Learning Services, that, of course, the work is is deep underway regarding what back to schools looks like. There there are five different committees slash task forces that are looking at hybrid learning, which is a combination of in-building and online. Second task force solely online curriculum, which we have to have in place, both for those students who are ill and have other reasons that they need to stay home. And if we're shut down fully again, we have to have that fully crafted. Third task force has to do with our teacher schedules and and how we're going to work with flexibility around that. Our fourth committee is medical safety hygiene with, thank you very much. We have parent physicians in our community serving on on that committee. And then we have a fifth committee looking at the facilities and what are our flexibilities? Like, for example, if we needed to have class in the gym because it's a it's a bigger space for distancing, how how many bodies can we accommodate in all of our spaces? We are also about to, I think most of you know, we're about to get a big briefing from the governor and her task force around the thirtieth of June regarding some direction as to what back to school will look like. That is all I have to say. And my colleagues on BIC, which are Cynthia and Jackie, do you do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think you covered it very well. Thanks.
Thanks, Jennifer. Does any anyone else who was who's not a part of BIC have any questions or comments before we move on to Lisa's report of policy? Okay, thanks, Jennifer, for that comprehensive, over a three-month span of what went on in our instructional committee. Appreciate it. Lisa?
Try to boil it down. The policy committee met twice, once. Well, the goal was to work on a campaign-specific policy. And I'm not going to go into too much detail about that because that is something that we're going to vote on. I know everyone's seen it here. And if we approve it, then we'll be able to post it so everyone can see it. But just we'll just summarize to say that that took the bulk of about a meeting and and a half for us. We are continuing to work on board operating procedures. That's going to be an ongoing goal. And then when we finish them, I'm sure that we'll, you know, be it will be an ongoing task to continuously update and add them. And so here's what we're working on in the future. And we're going to, over the summer, we have opened a document where, you know, the the board operating procedures are sort of in draft form. And we can comment and work on them in an open document. Jennifer, Howard, and I are on the committee, and we can do that, you know, without meeting per se, but just working off of mutual document that we'll share. The other goals that we have, so that's really the overreaching goal. Um, the other goals that we have, uh, so that's really the overreaching goal of the committee. But occasionally, something will come up and we'll have to address it. So it's been asked that we look at the committee, our standing committee structure and the chairs. Um, and sort of come up with some more definitive uh, some recommendations as to what um, the role of a chair and committee members in all of our standing committees will be. And thirdly, but I'm gonna suggest we move this to the top priority, is the resolutions that we are tasked with from the um, students. And Paul, am I right that this is the standing committee of the students that they were tasked with um, coming up with an, an anti-racism policy, but they're gonna remain a committee?
Yeah, I mean, I said, I call the task force, it's really a committee, they're gonna be working with Margaret, so yeah, throughout the year. So I, I should probably change that.
Coordinate that with Margaret and make sure that um, we prioritize what they prioritize first and that we can make that happen. Um, you know, I, I'm gonna have them direct our committee as to what, what order to put things in, um, so that we can get to that first. And that's about it. Does anyone have any questions?
Lisa, I would, I would just add that um, as the, either the BIC committee or the policy committee work on these initiatives from the, the resolution, that um, we work with Margaret and the student task force to see what they think, so we can use them as a, as a sounding board on what we come up with and what administrations comes up with and make sure that uh, we're on the right track.
Yep, I think, I think we all agree to that. Thanks, Howard. Okay, um, with that, um, Howard, report of FFLA.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, this will be my final um, FFLA report for this year. I am stepping down as chairman of the FFLA committee and Paul will be uh, taking that on, starting in the next meeting that we have. Um, we had a FFLA meeting with Mark, myself and Paul on June ninth. Um, many of the issues that we um, discussed have already been uh, brought to the board. Uh, we talked about the social studies curriculum costs, that was brought to the board last meeting. Uh, the Aramark contract that was in the consent today, the EnviroClean contract that was in consent today. Um, there was also discussion about uh, the IA budget. That obviously is an ongoing evolution because the IA budget for next year um, is also moving the same way that the, uh, our budget is moving based on state funding.
Yeah, Howard, just, just on that, um, just because I was privy to it, so about an hour ago, the IA budget did pass the Joint Steering Committee.
Very good. Um, the, for, for, well, for Bloomfield, that has three implications. One, with the uh, proposed uh, new consortium agreement, uh, the IA becomes even more closely tied to the Bloomfield Hill School District. So the, I think going into the future, the IA budget is something that we, as a board, are gonna have to continue to uh, work with Tina on and, and Lynn Gibson. Uh, second is uh, obviously, the tuition is what we pay for our students to go to the IA. And then third is because the, the trial is one of our buildings physically. Uh, there is a provision, we had a, a loan to the IA of, I think around three million dollars for some construction that was done about a decade ago. Um, it has been agreed upon uh, by the CFOs of the uh, Central Campus Consortium uh, districts that I think it's two hundred and ninety-five dollars per year that the IA reimburses uh, Bloomfield Hill Schools for that construction cost from a decade ago. Uh, it has been agreed that we will defer at least one year, if not two years. We're, we're, I think, a year not, either eight or nine of that um, ten-year uh, repayment. And we have agreed to defer that for a couple of years. So uh, I'm assuming Tina has taken care of that, both in the IA budget favorability and then um, our revenue will be going down slightly uh, because of that for a couple of years until um, the COVID uh, issues get resolved. Um, we also talked about some staffing furloughs and salary adjustments from Kelly Bowles, our HR manager. And then we finished, um, the last few minutes of the meeting, uh, on the ninth, with starting to have the conversation about uh, the strategic plan. Uh, the two goals of the strategic plan have been given by the superintendent to the BI, to the FFLA committee. Uh, one is the, the finance and facilities goal and the third, and the second is goal number three, which is the HR personnel goal. So we talked about that briefly, some ideas of what metrics and targets would possibly look like. But I think um, per the superintendent, that there will be no May, uh, no July meetings. The administration will be working on some proposals of metrics and targets and uh, will be bringing that up again at the August meeting, is my understanding. Very good, the superintendent's shaking his head. So uh, that was the FFLA meeting for the month of June.
Thanks, Howard. I was there, Mark was there. Any of my colleagues who weren't at the FFLA meeting have any questions or comments? Okay, with that, um, we will go to item D under um, under general discussion. I, I know, actually, before we get to D, before I forget, I know Cynthia, um, you wanted to, we wanted to add something on the general discussion. Um, do you want to talk about it now? Okay.
Be happy to. Sure. Um, so um, yesterday, the Farm Community Engagement Committee met with, with representation from Friends of the Farm, Preservation Bloomfield, the 4-H Clubs, Bloomfield Township and Farm Staff Members. Um, Alan and his team at the, at the school farm have some exciting plans, the work and all of the details will be available when the new farm website is revealed after Ju- July fourth. Um, yesterday's meeting was um, to develop a plan for a farm membership. Um, that idea was identified as a goal under the Farm and Nature Strategic Plan that was um, developed three years ago. So the membership plan that uh, we discussed at great length and continue to refine um, uh, will be launched on July twenty-fifth. Um, benefit to being a member, um, there will be self-directed access to the farm on Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays and the hours will be um, posted on the website. Um, there also, we offer um, reciprocal agreements to over two hundred and fifty garden and arboretums across the state and the country uh, through the American Horticultural Society. Um, members only um, programs and classes, special access to pre-sales for special events, discounts um, at the farm shop. Um, there will be one-time admissions still available without having a membership. And the different classes of memberships that will all be defined and read that out at the uh, on the website, um, when it opens after the Fourth of July. Uh, so the farm will be operating a farm shop, which will be open to the public on Saturdays, beginning on July twenty-fifth. And they will have a dairy store ice cream, um, that they're very excited about being able to offer. So please come join the farm and have some fun. Um, memberships will be available for everyone, um, not just, um, not just the school community, but our whole community.
Thanks, Cynthia.
Cynthia, may I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Um, everything you talked about, is that under the auspices of the farm as part of Bloomfield Hill Schools? Or is that under the umbrella of the Friends of the Farm, which is a separate organization?
Under the umbrella of the farm, not, not the Friends of the Farm.
Okay.
Farm membership, so Friends of the Farm are one of the constituent groups, but they have their own group just as Preservation is it, Bloomfield has its own group and the Horse Group is a different group.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks, Cynthia. With that, I'm gonna hand it over to uh, to Pat to talk about our return to school task force presentation.
Thank you. So let me first start by talking about what we do and how we got here. We are in the business of educating children. We have one of the most important jobs in the world, a job that we don't take lightly. And with this job, we have amazing opportunity to guide all of our young people. So as we've been planning our return to school presentation, keep in mind, we know we've also have the focus on the task at hand. So while we were working on our Continuous Learning Plan two point O, we kept our focus there as we did research on returning to school. With the end of the school year, we rolled out our Continuous Learning Plan three point O, Summer Edition, while we were working on our research with back to school. As part of our research process, we were able to form a network with twenty-two different school districts in four different states in the United States. We were also able to network with schools in South Korea, Denmark and Israel. Why? The why is, we know how serious this is. These are unprecedented times. There is no blueprint that's set forth by some other school district that you can just use as a reference. We're all trying to guide our way through this as best as possible. What we didn't want to do was to rush, put something out without any research. Just to hap, hazardly present something to say, we have an idea of what may or may not go on. We also wanted to make sure through our research that we gave our community the best effort we could. Again, if the goal is to get something out, six weeks ago, we could have put it out six weeks ago. We could have put it out right after spring break, but that was not our goal. So kind of going from there, we're looking at, David, you wanna go to the next slide, please? So as part of our work, we're looking at a couple of different possible, you know, COVID nineteen wave scenarios that might take place. One, or it's peaks and valleys, and you can kind of see how that could go on for the next couple of years, a fall peak or slow burn. All of these could be accurate, yet none of these can be accurate. So our goal is to make sure we plan for as many possible scenarios as well. As part of that planning, we formed a steering committee. And within that steering committee, David, you wanna go next slide? Within that steering committee are five different task force groups. One, blended learning model. Two, our virtual learning programming. Three, flexible schedules. Four, health and wellbeing. And five, operations planning. With the goal of taking all of our research and involving as many stakeholders as possible to start building out what the fall may or may not look like. As was referenced before, the governor, Governor Whitmer, will give us some guidance uh, next, next week on June thirtieth. And hopefully that comes to fruition and that will help us move forward as we finalize our plans. So our number one plan for return to school is that we're going to return to school in person. That is what we're preparing for. I know as a, a parent of a rising high school senior, my wish for her is that she goes back to school and she's completely safe next year. I know I don't fully control that. I know that the Michigan Department of Education and the governor is going to weigh in and give us some guidelines. So in preparation, we know that we had to look at what a blended model would look like. So we are going to share three different blended models with you. A blended model means that students are in school part of the time and part of the time they're at home, remote learning. So option A. Option A is a week on, week off. Half the student population will report to school for five full days each week, while the remaining second half of the school population participates in distance learning at home. The student population will alternate between each week. Students will be provided assignments to support their learning on the days in which they do not report to school. Option B. Option B is week on, where, you know, week off, but it rotates between A and B. So half the student population will report to school for in-person teaching and learning on Monday and Tuesday. And the other half will report to school Thursday and Friday. Each Wednesday will be used for co-curricular classes and small group reteaching, intervention, enrichment. Students will be provided assignments to support their learning on the days in which they do not report to school. Option C. Half the students will attend school Monday, Wednesday and Friday, and the other half will attend Tuesday, Thursday. On the following week, they will rotate. Students will be provided assignments to support their learning on the days in which they do not report to school. We started out with probably twelve or thirteen different options. And then whether it was logistics or whatever reason it could not work and working with our stakeholders in the task force, we were able to pare it down to three different options. So now comes one of the questions, which option are we going to go with? Tomorrow, roughly around eleven AM, a community survey is going to be set out. It'll include not just the community, but teachers, um, staff members, um, and also our students. Because we want to make sure we get feedback on which option may work best for you. Again, as someone that's a parent, I really don't like any of the options. I like the option, how can my child go back to school safe? How can we all go back to whatever maybe the new normal will be? Again, we have to come to the understanding that we may not be in control of that situation. The governor and MDE is going to give us that guidance. So we need to be prepared for what it looks like to go back to school with everyone going back, which we've been preparing to. What it would look like if the governor mandates that we have to go to this blended model? And then we know that there are parents that are going to want an online option as well. And so we'll talk about that in just a minute. Mr. Bank, you had a question?
Thank you. It took me a second to find the microphone button there. I, I answered the question, but I want to make sure that I understand it clearly and there is the possibility that we go back full-time with all the students on campus a hundred percent of the time. But if the governor says we must go to a blended model, these are the three blended models we're considering? Or are we saying there is no chance of the students being back a hundred percent of them and it will be one of these three?
We are saying, our number, our number, you are correct, it's former, our number one goal is to bring everyone back. That is our goal, and bring everyone back safely. However, we don't have full control of that. The governor, as we've seen in some other states, the governor and the Michigan Department of Education might decide we need social distancing. And that's mandated as an example. If that's the case, we can't bring everyone back. So it would have been fairly simple for us to say, here's the model we're proposing. We're going with option A, this is what we're doing. But we wanted to make sure that our staff, our parents and our students had the opportunity to weigh in so they could share what model they feel best meets their needs. Again, it's not the ideal situation that we have to go to.
But, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think when we post this uh, online and when the survey goes out, I think it needs to be clear that this is if we are required by the state to go to a blended model that it, because when I first looked at the presentation tonight, it appeared to me that it would be one of these three options, there were no other options other than the virtual. And I, I know that's not what you intended to communicate, but I think there's great room for misinterpretation in the parent community and um, you'll be getting a lot of emails and voicemails if it's not completely clear.
I will make sure, and I appreciate the feedback, I'll make sure that it's clear in the survey that these models are predicated on the governor dictating social distancing, meaning we need to divide our student population in half to open our buildings.
In the first, though, it, you know, and there's still the possibility that the governor will allow us to bring everybody back full-time. Um, that, that's not foreclosed at this point, I think that needs to be clear.
Correct. We have no guidance right now. So we're kind of going with, what are the possibilities based on what's going on nationally and internationally?
Right. I mean, it just needs to be clear that one of the possibilities is full-time for everyone, that it, that hasn't been taken off the table. So.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, so the question I have, um, Pat, as a follow-up. So if the governor says we have to go to a blended model, are, are you saying because of social distancing, because of space, we have to go to one of these options, A, B, C? Or that you're saying the governor is gonna dictate that only half the amount of students? So I guess a question our community is gonna, you know, gonna ask is, you know, what about like, private schools? Are, are private schools, if the governor says you have to go to one of these modified options, um, are private schools still gonna be able to go full Monday to Friday? Or they're gonna have to go to some blended model similar to us?
If the governor requires social distancing, every school, public, private and charter will have to comply with that executive order. There'll be no room for anyone. So if we somehow had four million square feet of foot Four million square feet of footage somewhere, we, we could spread everyone else out more, then it's conceivable we could bring everyone back every. Every day in that model. But it simply isn't the case. We would have to divide our population in half. Um, the anomalies you might see is if someone has a smaller school system or a small private school. And they can divide the kids out and have social distancing. There's no like magic number. Um, it all depends on your district. So you look at the size of roughly fifty-five hundred kids. The square footage of the building, the size of the classrooms, if everyone has to be six feet apart, the only way to accomplish that. Is to divide your population in half. But make no doubt, we are preparing first and foremost for a return to school with everyone going back. We just want to make sure that we're prepared for whatever guidance is going to come out afterwards, and we don't know. And that's the hard part. I mean, Todd's going to talk about the virtual academy and then sitting back and putting on my parent hat. I have five thousand what ifs. What if this happens? What if this happens? What if this happens? So let me play out and Mr. Baron, I'll get your question in a minute. Let me play out kind of what happens from here. And kind of skip to the end a little bit. So the survey goes out, we're able to gather feedback from our parents, from our staff and our students. That if we have to go to a blended model. What is the preference? We get the guidance next week from the governor. The, at that point, we can then look at, here's what we need to do. Here's what's mandated by the governor. How are we going to make sure we accomplish that as a school district? Same task everyone has. Then we're going to look at, maybe there's some optional guidance. Based on the optional guidance, what do we feel is best? That best serves the needs of our parents and our students and our community. And that's where we might need to have further discussion. And then we'll tie all those pieces together and have a full plan that we can deliver to the community saying, here's what we're doing. Again, we didn't want to get to the spot today and say, here's what we're doing. You had no choice in the blended learning model. Or we're just bringing everyone back only a week later to come back and say, well, now we have to change everything because the governor said this is what it has to be. We don't want to send a mixed message. Mr. Baron?
I just had one follow-up. So I'm just saying, if we did a survey. You know, so option A, B and C is based on social distancing, you know, the student population. But if we did a survey and we knew for a fact, as an example, thirty percent of our population. Will not come back at all, want online learning and we could somehow space it out. To potentially have a five-day, based on the amount of students we think that will be going. I mean, we're going to look at all options based on what the guidance is and what we could do from a spacing point of view.
Let's say, let's say thirty-eight point five percent said, we're staying online, we want online and they commit to it. Maybe we can't go K through twelve, maybe it's K through ten and we rotate differently. But yeah, all options are still going to be on the table. We're not trying to give that final plan until we have all the details. And that's why, you know, kind of when I've talked to different board members at different times, that's why we wanted to make sure. We focused on a process for getting this done. We didn't want it to be haphazardly. We don't want to tie anyone's hands. We don't want to tell the community, we're doing A, B and C, then a month later, well, we're doing something different. And now we're doing something different. I can share some of the other people I've talked to. And districts that have put out plans are now saying, well, now we're looking to go in a different direction. And then if the governor says something different, then we're going to have to switch for the third time. So it's something that I will continue to update the board and update the community on as we continue to move forward. But there is no definitive. You know, um, decision being made tonight. Tonight is about sharing information, sharing what we knew, uh, what we know. Here are the facts at hand. And we make decisions based on the information we have. So we're sharing the information we have. And that information is going to change a little bit on the thirtieth when we get more information from the governor. And then the governor pivots in August, we'll be ready for that as well.
Okay, understood. All right. Thank you, Pat Howard.
That's a great question, by the way. I like that.
Um, all right, I have one comment and one question. Uh, the comment is Mark is absolutely correct. It is possible that we might go back to, you know, to the buildings one hundred percent. But how likely is that?
I don't know. This gets into.
I, I would say, I would say, looking at the governor's track record over the last three months. And looking at the track record of other governors and what is happening in other states around the country. You know, just turn on the news over the last week or two. Um, I'll, I'll let you make that your own assessment in terms of how likely. It is that social distancing is not a requirement. Um, come going forward. So that's the comment. On the question, in looking at option A, B and C. Um, and then looking a little bit ahead on the, on the virtual, you've got two different. Structures, one for K five and one for K or six twelve. Is there any grade differentiation? Elementary, middle, high school on option A, B and C, or are we going to? If we go one week and on one week off on option A, the. Kindergartners will do that and the twelfth graders will do that?
You are correct. We'll divide the student population in half and rotate based on one of those models. And let me also kind of, you know, you made your comment, so let me kind of share my thoughts on that. I don't know what the governor is going to do. And, and my job is to not know, try to figure out what she's going to do and guess. Because then that leads to a lot of mistakes. I've talked to the cabinet team. Um, I've talked to the stakeholders that are involved as far as the planning in the steering committee. There are four things we have to prepare for. One, we all go back to school. Whatever that new normal is. We have to go to a hybrid model. You know, the blended learning. We need to be, uh, be prepared to have some type of virtual academy for those who want to stay home. And the fourth thing we're not talking about tonight that we're preparing to is, what if we do go back? And everyone goes back or fifty percent go back or whatever percent go back and the governor says, hey. It is Tuesday at twelve PM, starting Wednesday, schools are closed for the next two weeks, for the next month. We need to be able to pivot and then say, here's our new online learning program. Not our virtual academy, but now you're going to be at home for two weeks or three weeks or a month. The parents will want to know, and I would want to know as a parent, what is that plan going to be? In the fall before school starts, so I know that. If we do have to shut schools, I know what the schedule is going to look like. I know what the expectations are and what we have to do. So we're trying to come up with four different plans, build a brand-new online school from scratch. In preparation of being prepared for whatever may happen. And that's kind of what I prefaced at the beginning. Education is a serious business and none of us take it lightly. And that's why you've seen the due diligence and you already know this. And the effort put in to make sure we uncover every possible source or idea. So that we can best leverage it to prepare for the fall. And so whatever the governor says, we know we'll have to comply. We know it can change and if we need to pivot and move on, we definitely will. If we have more options, as far as I was talking to. Uh, the principal, I'm sorry, superintendent in Nixa today, uh, Mississippi. And they have local control, so they're able to decide based on each school district what they want to do. And so that's a little bit different than, like you said, we might get here, but whatever we have will be prepared for.
Let me just say the reason for my question. If I've, I'm a parent and I have a six, a five-year-old, a six-year-old and an eight-year-old.
Yes.
And in option A, B and C. My children are going, and they're all going to, you know, way, let's say.
Sure.
My children are either, are going to be home fifty percent of the time. It varies on which days of the week they're going to be home, but they're going to be home.
You are correct.
I'm a single parent. How am I going to handle that?
That becomes part of the what-if. You're going to need daycare. Our daycare is going to be open. You know, these are all the what-ifs that may come up that we'll know more next week. If social distancing is mandated and we have eighty-five to ninety percent of our students that want to return. There is no other option for any school district. Our size, except for going for a blended learning model, just based on capacity. There's no other way around.
And I understand that the reason, uh, some districts have looked at. Because elementary school age kids obviously need supervision. High school age or middle school children can self-supervise once you're twelve or thirteen years old. And they can get back and forth and get on the bus and get back at home and, you know, can, can take, don't need a babysitter. So is that kind of a blended model possible? Because from the parent's side. That obviously would be if my children, the elementary school kids are in school all day. And then I have latchkey, that works. And then for the high school kids and the middle school kids, they take care of themselves when they get home. But option A, B and C doesn't give me that option.
I think we actually discussed this at BIC and Jennifer actually probably has a comment on this.
Actually, before, before we go through this, I, I just want to make sure, Pat. Um, and we'll have time for questions. Ha, ha, are you done with your presentation? Because maybe this is, so, but why don't, why don't you finish your presentation and we can go through questions? Because I think Mark just had a question, but he was willing to wait till the end, so why don't we do it that way?
Todd, I'll turn it over to you with the virtual learning.
Yep, thank you. And, and Mr. Watson did a great job of going through the different models based on. What our response might be to the governor's executive orders. So the first goal is to just come back in its entirety. But there may be an order in which if COVID begins to spike, that we, we may be required to social distance. That goes into those hybrid models that you saw. Or even beyond that, there might be a region within the state that is, that is closed down and moved into remote learning. And so what we want to do is we want to be able to move nimbly and flexibly between each one of those scenarios. So like from a parent listening today, like, like you said.
Todd, you going in and out? At least for me. I don't know, Pat, you want to just take over quickly or?
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So you might start school year in your grade level classroom teacher. And then a month later, maybe we're in a hybrid model because of the governor's executive order. And then by November, maybe we're in remote learning. That might sound like a, a lot of disruption to some families. And we know that some of them may choose, you know, I just want to be in a virtual academy type experience. I'm okay with, with, um, a, a virtual learning platform and that seems to be the most predictable outcome. Or another, another portion of our families may have a situation at home where either the child or a person living in the home may be medically fragile. And or have a compromised immune system and they're worried about coming back to school. Now, we don't know exactly what those numbers are. We have estimates everywhere from five percent to twenty-five percent. And the reason there's such a widespread is because we don't think parents yet have enough information to make a final determination of that. They're probably not going to have enough information until August. So it's going to be really important that through a third survey process, we really monitor those numbers. And we need to be prepared to have a virtual academy that sits outside of those models that Pat just talked about. That you would be able to start that virtual academy. In September, your teachers aren't going to change. They're going to be taught by Bloomfield Hills teachers. You can almost think of it as what we are doing right now over the summer, we are preparing to launch a new school. And it's going to be a K twelve school and it's going to be a virtual academy. And we're going to leverage the strengths that we have as a district and have a heavy integration of the farm and nature center. And what we've been doing is doing quite a bit of research and we've already been familiar with online academies. And it hasn't necessarily been attractive for us to move in to that type of business. It's always been kind of like as an off, so we might partner with Michigan Virtual High School because we have. One child that wants to take Chinese six hundred. And so I might try to find an, an available option through that experience. Um, however, after researching all of that, not only do we think we're going to have a very robust and rigorous. Online academy, quite frankly, we believe we're going to do this better. And we are preparing to be able to launch that by, um, uh, September. And we're going to be writing a lot of that content and curriculum over the summer. And so right here's a concept around that where we try to divide it into two different segments. Knowing that the experience that somebody might enroll their five-year-old into is going to look a lot different. Than the experience that somebody wants to enroll their junior into. And so we're going to try to pull those apart and make sure it is, uh, blended with the farm. If things start to become safe, we can start bringing those kids into the farm and nature center. So it might start off first virtually with the farm and nature, nature center. But then quickly, if we feel like those families are starting to become comfortable coming on campus, we can start bringing them into those facilities. And playing very meaningful, rich experiences. So that's what we're planning for. It's going to be really important that we survey that because as of right now, we don't know if we're planning for twenty kids. Or two hundred kids or five hundred kids. But what we do know is we're going to be ready for whatever the outcome is. And that survey process for families listening, doesn't mean if they take the survey, they're deciding next week. Uh, but it's definitely a number that we want to be able to track and it will help us program into that. And that's it for, uh, the virtual academy. We're calling it Bloomfield Virtual and we're getting ready to launch that.
Okay, Pat, is it, are we done with the presentation for questions or you still have more?
I just want to ask, I just want to take the opportunity to thank everyone, our community partners, volunteers, staff, students. Our medical experts and many others. It was a great collaborative effort. And there's still a lot of work left to be done and we're excited for that part. And another thing is it really gives us a chance to be innovative and continue to think outside the box of what school can look like. That we removed a lot of these boundaries. So it's really not this. I don't want to say like the sky is falling. It's like, whatever happens, how do we make it great for kids? How do we do what's going to be impactful and powerful? Because whatever we do, this is going to be something they remember the rest of their lives. We all have those different memories from this teacher or that teacher. But they are living through a piece of history that they're going to tell their kids and their grandkids about. And we want Bloomfield Hill schools to be part of that conversation that my school did this or my school, you know, really went. Above and beyond to make sure I had a great experience and really looked out for me. And again, that's why I referred to at the beginning, education is a serious business. We are in the business of educating our children. I know there are some additional questions.
Yeah, we, we had. I know Jennifer had a comment, um, and then I'll look at the chat room.
So, no, I just wanted to, to speak.
And Lisa had a question, okay?
I, I just want to speak to Howard's concern for a minute because as a working parent. And as a survey reader and as a person on the hybrid task force. It, it is very hard to wrap one's head around. Children attending school and parents working slash needing childcare. Um, there is no scenario that is going to work for everybody. Um, there, there are a lot of variables. Some, some families won't want their schedule to. From one week to the next week. Like, we decided as a hybrid task force, a- at the end of the day. That we were going to put needs of our learners first. And see the, the problems through that lens. And, um, the, the survey will help the, delineate what our community needs for logistically. As the school board and as the educators, we have to put the education. Above the logistical problems that will ensue.
Lisa? Thanks, Jennifer.
Okay, uh, I just wanted to make a comment. That, uh, from someone who's, who struggled with this at the last meeting. I, I couldn't wrap my brain around the different test forces and what was going on. So I spent the last couple of weeks, um, asking lots and lots and lots of questions. I'm still working through a lot of it, but what I've come up with is, um. Something that I, I'm really excited about. I think it started with Pat talking to different countries because they've been through it. They've been through all of the, and the first slide is really important. We kind of went through that quickly. Because there's so many different things that could happen with COVID nineteen. We can, it can be spikes. It can be, you know, we might look at a, a second full-on closure and quarantine. We just don't know. Um, I, I think it, it's really important to note, um, a- and agree also with Mark a hundred percent on this. That we really have to make it clear that we are, we, we have as much leeway as we get from the governor. And that's it. So whatever the governor decides and it will be the entire state, public, private. Um, you know, we're all bound by that first and foremost. And then after that, really what I saw and sort of dissected over the last couple of weeks is something pretty remarkable. Um, I'll, I'll try and explain it in layman's terms because I think it can be a little confusing at first. But i- it's a plan that, um, maximizes. plan that maximizes as much freedom as we get from the governor, but gives as many choices as possible for parents. So if you are concerned or if you have issues at home with immunocompromised people, or if you have childcare issues, there's going to be something that will not necessarily meet all your needs, but will be able to accommodate you to the extent that we're allowed to. So you know, what does distancing look like in school? They've actually accounted for all that too. How do you distance elementary school? It's going to be based on whatever the directive of the governor is, but I mean, they've looked at things like incorporating outdoor learning, mask wearing. So our parents should know that all of those things that I've been asked have been included in these plans. And this is just an incredible amount of work because it's like having ten to fifteen separate plans for each scenario. And at the end of the day, what really excites me the most is, a lot of it is. And I so appreciate the enthusiasm of Todd and of Pat because they took what is really a scary situation that not many people feel so optimistic about for the fall and really did make lemonade out of lemons. They what our virtual academy that we're developing is something that we're going to be able to keep. So long after we have a vaccine and we don't have to worry about COVID nineteen, we're going to have a really good alternative for students for a variety of reasons that might have to utilize a very well-developed online academy. It's going to have all of the components that we, that we've learned from parents and students and teachers, things that have worked and haven't worked during a quarantine are rolled into this plan. So it will be like Todd said, Bloomfield teachers teaching this. It isn't like Michigan Virtual Academy. It's going to offer a chance for students to make up grades and recover. I mean, the possibilities really are endless. It is going to be very quality online learning, the likes of which we really haven't seen before. And my question, I kept coming back to is this is just a lot of work that might be for nothing because all of these task forces are what-if scenarios. And the answer is when whatever comes our way, we are prepared for. We're prepared for a spike in a quarantine. We're prepared for an executive order that still requires distancing and we're prepared for no restrictions whatsoever back to school as, as normal. And best yet, we're able to utilize all of this research to the best extent possible in our virtual academy that will exist two, three, four, ten years down the road. So you know, you know, I, I just, my mind can't even imagine all the possibilities that students could take advantage of and actually utilize a really well-thought-out virtual academy in the future. It's really endless. So I'm still asking a lot of questions. I still have a lot of logistics questions. I still get a lot of questions from parents. There's going to be an SAT. You know, how are we going to do that? I mean, it, I think if we could make something clear in the survey tomorrow, my one thing that I would reiterate again and again is just to make clear that we are bound by the governor and the orders that we get from the governor and we, we don't have leeway to offer anymore and we don't plan to offer anything less restrictive. So anyway, thank you for indulging all my questions, Pat and Todd. I'm sure there'll be more, but anyway, thank you.
The one thing, I guess, thanks, thanks Lisa. One thing for Howard as a question, I, I do want to assure the community for, for what it's worth. I, I have been, just because I happen to live by it and I, and I do kind of, you know, run over there every morning. But what John Seiko, Avis and Mike Calgary have done in terms of opening up for the practices that process and procedure, because I've witnessed it, they have it down to a science. In terms of, you know, you have to fill out, you basically, there's a, you fill out a questionnaire that they, they do on their phone. And then John Seiko checks their temperature. John Seiko sprays their hand. And then the practices itself, the coaches with them monitoring it, social distancing. So you know, I've witnessed it in terms of just opening it up for our, you know, for our co-curricular activities that's been going on for the last, you know, week or two. I know they, they, you know, at least that, you know, that team and I'm sure all of our educators and administrators across the district, that team has that down to a science. So I, I give credit to that team. What's, you know, gone on the last week or two. Howard?
Thank you, Paul. I really want to thank Jennifer for her responding to my question related to parents with elementary school kids. You said it was a logistics issue. I'm seeing it as an equity issue. If you're, if you're a single parent and you have to pay for basically daycare at home while your kids are in school half the time or in, in home half the time, you might not be able to afford that additional cost of someone over, you know, babysitting your kids. So I hope Superintendent Watson, that is we send a questionnaire out. And maybe this doesn't affect many of our parents in this community. I really don't know. But again, we, especially with our, our resolution from earlier, we need to be looking at everything from an equity lens. So I, I hope superintendent that we have a question in the questionnaire that somehow addresses this if there is a concern from some of our parents. At least we know how many of the parents would be financially strained by having this kind of a daycare. So if we say that's, we, we can't address that, then logistically internally in our district, in, in the buildings. Okay, I understand that, but we really have to look at this from the parent's side. And if it is a significant percentage of our parents who do have these issues, I, I think we need to address it in some way. But the only way to find that out is if you ask.
Thank you.
And just on the flip side, Howard, because I sit, you know, obviously I sit on some boards downtown with my, you know, working with my, my, my other job or real job. Employers are struggling with this issue, realizing that students, you know, that, that, you know, students are going to be home and, and what are they going to do in terms of managing that from the employer's side? So I'm just saying this, there's two ends of the spectrum. There's, you know, what are we doing? And then what are employers doing? So I'm actually on both, you know, those, you know, that, you know, one of the boards I sit in downtown, what are employers doing as well? I don't, I don't, I'm not saying we need to answer it, go through it. I'm just saying it, it's something that, you know, employers are considering, just like school districts.
Paul, you're absolutely correct. Governor Cuomo a few weeks ago said in a press conference, his daily press conference, you can't open up business until you open up schools. They're linked. Because basically schools are daycare. So how we untangle that Rubik's cube, I don't know. And that's why I was a little concerned about seeing option A, B, and C. Because I don't see a solution for that subset of the parents who have to, have to go to a job. They can't virtual work at home, like some of the white collar people, but they have to go to their job. They're a teacher. How does a teacher address this? If you're getting a low salary as a first or second year teacher and you got a few little ones at home, how do you handle that? It's something I think, and maybe that's a, a small group of our parents and therefore it's something that we can't address. It's just something that we need to find out on. Thank you.
Understood. I don't see any, okay, sorry, Jackie.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, I'm in higher ed and higher ed is also, it's so complicated, right? There are certain courses that can be done online and then there are certain courses that can't be done online. And so everyone is struggling with this. I mean, think about labs, then they have to only have five people in a fifteen slot lab because they have to have an open station on each side of the student. I mean, it's so complicated. And everybody is struggling with this at the same time. And so I think that to Lisa's point, it's so complicated, but the, the teams are just working so well together. And everybody's at the table. There are, there are, there are doctors there. There are just every kind of experts that we need in order to be able to really navigate and come up with the best solutions that we can.
Thanks, Jackie. With that, I don't see there's, thanks, thanks very much, Todd, Pat. All right, yep, Pat.
Can I make one more quick comment?
Of course.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you. So just want to touch on a couple of things we learned from COVID and the shutdown. One, the importance of seeing a teacher in person and how meaningful that is to our students, not just academically, but their mental health. And so we're trying to find an option to meet the needs of all of our students as best as possible. A, the Denmark option of K through five goes to school every day and six through twelve never gets to be in front of a teacher. We know what the mental health implications of that would mean. These are just difficult situations. Again, I want to make it clear, our number one goal is we return to school as normal as possible next year. We have thrum, almost three months before it's time to go back, where everyone goes back as safe, in a safe setting. So Mr. Baron, I appreciate your comments. There's no easy solution to any of these models. But we're dedicated to finding out what's going to work best for our students and for our parents. What the survey tomorrow will do is give us some baseline data to help us move forward. And then once we know what the governor's expectations and Michigan Department of Education's expectations are for us, that will then allow us to really kind of craft and answer those additional, more detailed questions you're looking for to get those responses. But until we know more detail in what the expectations are, we don't want to just lead the community down for, we could have a survey that had a hundred and fifty questions on it tomorrow. And ninety-nine percent of them want to be relevant because we don't know what the governor is going to say. So again, we're focusing on the task at hand, the facts we know, and preparing for the four potential return to school models that could take place next year.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. Would you be able to share that, the results of that survey with us in the community when they're available?
He's been sharing the results of all the weekly surveys with the entire community.
Okay, thank you.
They go up online every week.
Very.
Thank you.
It'll be online and you'll be able to get them. And then if you have comments, feel free, there should be comments or questions that you may have. Absolutely.
Thanks, Pat. Thanks, Todd. Thanks to everyone involved with that. Great work. With that, Dave, our return to school technology planning?
Yeah, all right. Let's, talking about tech, seems like fun. A couple of works though, right?
Let's see if you can get the presentation up and then we'll worry about it.
That's right. I don't want to jinx myself. Well, thank you. I just, this is going to be extremely brief overview and a little bit of background for the monies that we're asking this evening. And, and really just want to cover a couple of things and then just really try to answer any questions. But any back-to-school tech planning that we've been doing, and this is based on all of this work we've done with the task force, the committees, our feedback from families, our feedback from teachers, our support teams, our tech team. You know, I've taken those calls at the call center. I'm understanding what our families are kind of experiencing. As a parent in this district, I got to see what that felt like for my kids and for my family who all worked. So I get that. So these are the three big takeaways from our back-to-school tech planning. The first one is how do we reduce barriers? And that's a big one. How do we reduce those barriers to teaching and learning for our, our, our students, our families and our teachers? And so anything that we do around devices and systems and software and all those other things, that stuff, how does it reduce those barriers and support that core business of teaching and learning, regardless of the environment or scenario it's in? The second big one is how do we retool our devices and systems for these different scenarios? Keep in mind that we were optimized for in-classroom face-to-face experience for teaching and learning. That blew up, right? With the zombie apocalypse, this all went different. And so we've taken everything, we've ripped things out of classrooms and we moved them out digitally into our families and into our community. But we need to retool those and get those devices right, right-sized and the right types of devices, the right systems to help support these types of scenarios and, and situations and just some of those unknowns. And then I think this is the most important piece about this back-to-school tech planning. We need to build enough capacity in the system to be highly or extremely flexible for all of the scenarios known and unknown when we go into next year. Because we know we may be at this for more than another twelve months. This could be another two fiscal years of school. We just don't know. And so by doing the work that we, we think we've outlined here and thinking about this, we want to build just enough capacity to be highly flexible for those. And so really, what, what, what are we really talking about here? So just a couple of key highlights. One, we're adding some additional devices. So we're looking at our K, our K through nine would end up being a one-to-one device ratio. Now, this is a big deal because we do have equity, equity issues in the district. A lot of people say, hey, we're Bloomfield Hills. There shouldn't be any problem with that. And in our last scenario, we know families supplemented highly with devices, their personal devices at home. But those may not be the correct devices for teaching and learning in this new environment. And moreover, we still have things on the horizon of how are we going to do state testing? What devices are going to be common? What platforms? So those are the things that we need to do and this will help tremendously close that gap and make it more manageable, both for families and both for teachers and for the district in general. The other things too, some unknowns that we don't know about, network infrastructure, servers, licensing. So think about this, if we have to spread out through a, a building, we don't have enough access points or wifi to support if we're putting a whole bunch of kids in gyms or other areas that we normally wouldn't have classrooms, field, you know, field houses, et cetera. So we're going to need to take a look at, do we, we need to have enough money to support those needs when we identify that. And so that's part of this ask. And while we did not necessarily outline all those specific ones, because we don't know quite yet what that could look like. And the other thing that we haven't covered here, but it's important part of this monies that we're asking is how are we going to support kind of our arts and music and, you know, performing arts, our choir, orchestra band, what does that look like? And I got to experience that with my girls is I heard the viola and the violin competing in the same orchestra days, you know, every Wednesday here and how we recorded and shared those. So we want to try to reduce all those barriers. We want to try to build systems that are a little bit more predictable and manageable and help just so our families and our teachers and our students just don't think about tech so much in this new environment as we go forward. Because there's going to be a lot of unknowns and stress and we all felt at this time, we would just want to try to reduce those going forward. So that's, I just really kind of jump into questions to try to help identify your thoughts and concerns.
I was on mute. Howard, do you have a question? Thanks, Dave.
Yes, two things. One, in looking through the, the pages you sent us this afternoon, the, it appears what the ninth graders right now are BYOB. Do I understand it right that we're transitioning them from BYOB to Chromebooks?
Yes, BYOB is a little bit different, but BYO. That's more in Jackie's higher ed area, but, but the BYOD, yeah. So think about it this way, right now our eighth graders, our sixth through eight is one-to-one. And our eighth graders now are moving on to ninth graders. Well, to read, to grab all those devices back and try to redeploy them, it'll take us about a month to do. So that would be a huge disruption. And then suddenly we're out of, you know, we're in a hybrid environment or kids are having to go back home. We wouldn't have devices and that, that would be a big challenge for us. So by allowing them to keep those devices, to build a little bit more capacity, our ten through twelve would still be in that BYOD model, but we'd be able to recover those devices that we have sent out for the most part, not all of them, but enough that we think we can supplement. But the money we did pad and the monies that we're asking for this evening to help if we identify some additional needs or we, something just happened we did not expect, we would have enough padding to, to resolve those issues.
I under, so it sounds like it's not a philosophical, we, we, we're doing some philosophical changes in terms of what device a grade should have and whether it's one-to-one or two-to-one. And we're changing our philosophy from, you know, as we've gone through the learning curve and that's cool. But it sounds like the ninth grade BYOD to Chromebook is not as much a philosophical change, but it's a logistics thing of it's really to, to ease up, you know, some of the workload on, on the IT group. So the, the follow-up to that would be, so as we kind of go in the next year or two or three, do you see that being a permanent change that the ninth graders will always have Chromebooks? Or would we transition back to a BYOD model once, you know, we get over the, the huge hump here?
Yeah, that is an excellent question, Howard. And you know, so, and I appreciate your answers. I know where you're coming from because we all, this group, and there's a handful of us here that went through this and our, our philosophy and how we approach. that went through this, and our, our philosophy and how we approach this, I don't know. And that's the honest truth. We do know that we have to refresh those devices. So, those Chromebooks, remember, those are five years old. They have an end of life. This is at the high school. And so, there'll be opportunity to either refresh those as they are, reduce them, or expand them. And we'll have input, but yeah.
I, I've no preference one way or the other, but what you said, you know, it was not evident from your write-up, because there are some philosophical changes that we're doing here, but there's this one item here sort of was, I didn't realize that was really a logistics thing. So, as that evolves, that would be great. The second thing is, I perfectly understand, and thank you so much for all the work you did in the last 48 hours to, to flesh this out. I know I put the, the question back on Tuesday when we had this initially in our, in our board meeting. All, the only request that I would have as an individual board member is, for, in that two-page document where you talk about the additional needs, like the access points or other type of, of capacity issues in the infrastructure, and you're requesting additional flexibility, it makes perfect sense. Could you please, though, add, because the, the devices of the 1.2 is about half of this? So, it's about $600,000, and the other $600,000 is the yet-to-be-determined additional needs. If you can just, on a periodic basis, through the weekly updates, and you give very wonderful weekly updates, including a lot of techy stuff that I really appreciate, that if you could just keep us informed as you identify what those are, and that won't hold up your, your, your logistics issues of doing the orders, because you'll have the dollars available. But at least if you can tell us, you know, on a week or every other week basis, hey, we just allocated $100,000 for this, or $200,000 for that, it just would be very, very useful, so we had that information.
Absolutely, you got it.
Thank you, sir.
Dave, I don't see any other questions regarding this. Dave, you want to do eight, seven?
Yeah, let me do that. Let me present real quick here. Sorry about that. Oh, I'm going to next. Okay, so, and this will be extremely brief, too. One of the things, and actually, Howard, Cynthia, and Mark will remember way back in 2012, when we did a, a large tech assessment for the district, and we looked at the challenges, our performance, our opportunity gaps, all these things around that, building a larger culture and ecosystem, et cetera. One of those things that we always had out there was our tech integration specialist position. And over the years, we, we tackled some different models, we explored some things, we had a new high school, the shove in there to, to, that sucked all of us into it, et cetera. But we came, and I appreciate Pat Watson and Todd supporting the, this need. And when this all hit, the zombie apocalypse, the pandemic, it became more critical than ever. And we had, we offered this to Lauren Dempsey, who was part of our tech team. And if you know Lauren, she's absolutely amazing, and that is just understating who she is and what she brings to the team. And we're able to develop our strategy and put a person in a position to help get their arms around all of the work that we're doing, from our media specialists, to our IB teacher leaders, to just the embedded work that kind of our tech leaders, the unsung heroes, so to speak, of our teachers that are doing this type of work. And this will help put those strategies in place, because you know, I'm that only other person, and so, this gives me capacity as well. And as you, as you know, in my cabinet updates, team updates, we've been talking about how all the bunch learns, the coaching that we've been doing, and we are developing metrics and the pieces of that. As you know, those are big, big data points for me. So, I just want to take any questions on that, or Pat, or anybody else wanted to add anything to it. But it's a critical component to what we're doing and moving forward.
Does anyone have any questions? I don't see any questions. Thanks, Dave. Appreciate the update. With that, we'll go to board business. Tina gave a great presentation earlier, so I will entertain a motion under nine A.
I move the Board of Education to adopt the final budget revision for the fiscal year 2019-20, as detailed in the attachments and as summarized in the detail that we have here.
Do I have support?
Support.
Okay, any discussion? I didn't think so. Howard?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
I'm yes, motion passes, seven oh. Do I have a motion for board business, nine B?
I'll do it again. In accordance with the Uniform Budget and Accounting Act, I move that the Board of Education adopt the tax resolution and related original budgets for the fiscal year 2020-2021 for the general fund and the reserve funds as required by law and is summarized in our agenda.
Okay, do I have support?
Support.
Okay, Cynthia, any discussion? Okay, Cynthia?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
And Howard, I assume, yes, you made the motion. I'm yes, motion passes, seven zero, nine C. Do I have a motion for the development of a Fox Hills and Lone Pine Task Force?
I move that the Board of Education mandate the creation of a Fox Hills Task Force and a Lone Pine Task Force to discuss the use of the properties beginning in July.
Okay, do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Just one, one statement here. The resolution that we had in the minutes, or in the, in the agenda, said upon the passage of a bond, and Mark said to start in.
Yeah, that was, that was inaccurate. It should have been July. If we want, we can make an amendment.
I, I, I don't, I don't care. It's just, I, I was just seeing the differences. So, we, we've decided that July is a better time to start this than the, the, thank you.
Okay, all right, we have a motion. Second, I'll start. Howard?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Okay, I'm yes, motion passes. Now, we go to nine D, adoption of Bloomfield Hills Guide for Board of Education candidates. Do I have a motion?
I'll make it. I move that the Board of Education adopt the Bloomfield Hills School Guide for Candidates as presented. It was presented in the board updates.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion?
I have a question. I, in terms of the wording in this, I read through it, and first of all, I appreciate all the effort that was put into this. But on page one, and I'm not sure, I'm sure everybody doesn't have it in front of them, where it talks about the function of the board. It goes through a laundry list of things that it states that are attributable to the Michigan Revised School Code. And one of the points in here, and I'm just trying to get my focus back on it, was to, where is that? That the board's role is to not only employ the superintendent, but other administrators, teachers, and support personnel. And I know somebody brought that statute to my attention some time ago, and I'm not sure I agreed with the reading and interpretation of that statute, that the board's role went beyond the superintendent. I, I think there's a little bit of gray in that statute. Doesn't mean that I'm rejecting this. I'm just pointing out, I'm not, I'm not sure that's entirely accurate.
Mr. President, is Kelly on the line by chance? Maybe she can help advise us, or we can get the.
Well. Let, let's talk about that for a minute, because what we, the, the portion, I guess, that we're calling the candidate guide, sorry, the candidate, the candidate guide, is really, I, I had hoped we could pull that out. This is kind of an onboarding packet. So, it will, we'll have some time to work on stuff, Mark. If you want to suggest that we work on wording of, of the beginning of it, it'll be relevant once we get new, in the event that we get new board members elected onto the board, it'll be like an onboarding packet for them. The candidate guide is really, I should have it in front of me. The section that talks about campaigning, and that's the one that we wanted to pass tonight, that, that couple. And we can pull that out, just so we can give direction to anyone who's running.
I, I don't, again, I don't have a, a problem with it. It's going to cause me to vote no on this. I'm just pointing out that I, I think that phraseology may need some work. I don't want this, we're not adopting this as a board policy, that somebody can point to it and say, this is the role of the board, because the, we wouldn't, whatever we pass doesn't supersede state statute on this. But I'm just pointing out that I, at some point, we might want to hone that a little bit.
Mark's making an excellent point. I, I think one of the things that, because the, the policy committee worked on this quite extensively, not that particular section. The, the candidate guide is really a subset of the BOP. And we really haven't finished the BOP yet, but we need to do the candidate guide because of the election coming up, so we're a little bit of putting the cart before the horse. And really, what you're talking about, Mark, really more of a BOP issue, which is sort of trans to the, the candidate guy. So, I think we can, through the, the policy committee, can resolve your issue over the next few months.
Okay, all right.
We, yeah, we, the last time this came up i- in a different context, someone had quoted the statute that, that that was basically the language, but we will definitely look at the statute and change it accordingly, and, and you can be, definitely be a part of that, Mark.
Okay, all right. I think, I think we know where we're going to go. All right, we have a motion. Second, we have some follow-up. Howard?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Okay, I'm yes, motion passes. We're at nine E. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the res.
Approved membership.
Approve the membership in the Michigan Association of School Boards for 2020 and 2021.
Okay. Second, okay, any discussion? And thanks. Cynthia?
Yes.
Yes. Mark?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
I'm yes, motion passes. Okay, next, nine F. Cynthia, do you want to talk about it before we make a motion? A little bit about the process, or?
I think you make the motion, and then you talk about it.
I'm sorry, that's right. Can I get a motion?
So, I move that the Board of Education adopt the completed year-end evaluation of Superintendent Pat Watson pursuant to Michigan law, including 1249 and 1249B of the Revised School Code, and has been rated highly effective for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
Okay, Cynthia?
So, just to, to recap a bit, the board went, worked with Superintendent Watson to identify the data that we would use to guide our, our evaluation process. And, and we use the Michigan Association of School Board Superintendent Evaluation Tool, as well as three goals that we worked together with, with Superintendent Watson to, to be sure were the key focus. And those goals were his 90-day plan execution for the 90 days in the school district, as strange as they evolved to be, the continuous learning plan, and equity across all of our buildings. And so, Superintendent Watson provided the board with all of the data for us to consider. And then, on June 3rd, we met and discussed all of that with him. On June 10th, we met with Jay Bennett from Michigan Association of School Boards, who helped facilitate our process for score the, the evaluation tool. And part of the law requires us to announce the scores in each of the areas of the evaluation at our meeting tonight. So, I will, let me just report that in governance and board relations. On a four-point scale, Pat had a 3.833, community relations, a 3.917, in staff relations, a 4.0, in business and finance, a 3.9, instructional leadership, a 3.8. And, and that was, that is the professional practices part of the evaluation. And then, the goals part was 40% on the four goals, and we gave him a 3.9 on those goals. And so, his score is a 3.9. He is highly effective superintendent, and I'm very happy to recommend the evaluation to you.
Thank you very much, Cynthia, for that, for that analysis. Any other comments or discussion from the board? Okay, I think it speaks for itself. Cynthia?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Howard?
An enthusiastic, yes.
I'm yes, motion passes, seven oh. Congratulations, Pat, on a highly effective evaluation.
Thank you.
Okay, nine G, do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education support the recommendation as presented for the 2020-21 student board, student board intern appointments.
Okay, and student advisory appointments as well is on the motion as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I didn't see that in my version.
That's, that's okay. Do I have support?
Support.
Discussion?
I have a question. It says, I move that the Board of Education support the recommendations. Aren't we adopting the recommendations?
Okay.
Yeah, I actually had that question, too. I was confused by that, too.
Yep, well, you're correct. It should be adopted.
So, when, once we adopt it, we have our interns and our advisory captains. Okay.
Correct, yes, yes. So.
What's the point of order right here? Because now you're changing the motion, so.
Can we move the motion and just make a new motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, both of them, both of you withdraw, and then, yeah.
Yep.
I withdraw, I withdraw the motion.
I'll move a new motion. I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendations for the 2020-2021 student board intern and student advisory appointments as presented.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Support.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
I'm yes, motion passes, seven oh. We'll present them at our next study session. Nine.
I'm going to let them know.
I will let them know, either tonight or tomorrow.
Okay.
Nine H, do I have a motion?
I will make the motion. I move the Board of Education approve up to $1.2 million for return-to-school technology needs. That is, in the best interest of our students and families. These costs will be funded from the center program reserves and offset by any state or federal funding that may be provided in the future.
Do I have support? Okay, discussion?
Yes, Paul, one thing. I just looked up on our current financial report that Tina gave us this evening. We currently have $4.7 million in our center program. So, this spending will be about 20 to 25% of that. So, just so everyone is aware, that we will then have about 3.5, once this, once David, if he spends all the funds that we have allocated here, we would have $3.5 million in the center program remaining.
Okay, thanks, Howard. Any other questions, discussion? Okay, Howard?
Aye.
Jackie?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
I'm yes, motion passes. Finally, do we have, Dave, any? I'm yes, motion passes. Um, finally, uh, do we have, Dave, any public comment?
Uh, no additional public comment.
Okay, with that, I'm going to call for a German in the meeting. Thank you, everybody.